I will call the regular, Everman City Council regular meeting to order. It is Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, and it is six o'clock. Everybody please rise for a moment of silence. If I have a pledge of allegiance.
For the United States, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever and ever.
Okay, so first item in the agenda is proclamation, or presentations of proclamation honoring and celebrating the 250th birthday of the United States Army. Proclamation honoring the 250th birthday of the United States Army. Whereas on June 14th, 1775, the Continental Congress established the Continental Army, giving birth to what would become the United States Army, an institution dedicated to the defense of freedom and the preservation of natural, national unity. And whereas for 250 years, the United States Army has stood as the world's premier land force, distinguished by its unwavering commitment to duty, honor, and country, and by the valor of its soldiers in both war and peace. And whereas the Army has played a critical role in shaping the course of American history, serving with distinction in every major conflict from the Revolutionary War to the present day, and ensuring the safety and security of the American people. And whereas the contributions of the Army extend far beyond the battlefield, including policekeeping missions, humanitarian relief, disaster response, technological innovation, and civic service that benefit communities across the nation. And whereas countless citizens from across Texas and from the city of Everman itself have proudly worn a uniform of the United States Army, demonstrating bravery, sacrifice, and patriotism in service to our country. And whereas the 250th birthday of the United States Army is a momentous occasion to celebrate its rich legacy, honor its heroes, and express gratitude to all soldiers, past and present, who have answered the call to serve. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Everman that we proclaim June 14th, 2025, as United States Army Day and Flag Day in the City of Everman, and encourage all residents to encourage, to recognize and honor the profound contributions, achievements, and enduring spirit of the United States Army on the occasion of its 250th birthday. Should I just toss this to you? You're welcome. That's good as it gets. Citizens' comments, I'm assuming we have none, so... Okay, next time, discussion items. Item A, consideration of an ordinance that would establish a permit procedure and requirements for solicitors within the city of Everman.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've handed out a copy of an ordinance that Victoria has drafted for us. This ordinance actually amends an article of our ordinances titled Peddlers or Solicitors. In here, what this would do, and the reason why this was brought up is because over the last couple of weeks, well, since the most recent hailstorm at City Hall, we have been receiving numerous calls from citizens inquiring about solicitors going door-to-door, whether or not that was illegal. Unfortunately, we don't have any ordinances that restrict it, and the Supreme Court upheld a while back that we couldn't completely outlaw it. However, we can require a permitting process and put in some restrictions and guidance there, but we can't completely outlaw it as it once, once was. So Victoria's gone through and drafted a, a pretty standard ordinance for your review. I just wanted to kind of bring it to your attention tonight for discussion. We're not asking you to approve or adopt this tonight. I know you like to discuss things and have time to digest it before we pass it, so I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to review it. And we're open to any input if you have any recommended changes or want to make sure we include anything in this ordinance.
I only have one question on this. Well, maybe more. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Who's going to control this?
Would be up to the Police Department for enforcement. The permits would go through the Permitting Department.
Uh huh. Okay. The only thing that has me concerned, we have a hard enough time now just with codes, getting that even controlled. How is this going to be controlled?
Um, I would say that that's probably a completely separate issue when we talk about the enforcement of ordinances, and we probably would need to address that separately. I don't know that we should necessarily make decisions on ordinances, on whether or not we, our ability to enforce, but I think we should have, it would be our recommendation, we have some sort of registration process and permitting process. Whether we want to charge a fee for it or not, I mean, you can make that determination as a council, whether you know, you want to charge a fee for a permit, but some sort of vetting process for these people that go door-to-door. Because that's the number one question that we get asked all the time, and that the Police Department has to field, is we get calls all the time that our Police Department is already having to respond to, of these folks are going door-to-door, are they legit or not? And now our officers are having to go out and make contact with them, identify them, are they a legitimate business, are they, are they doing a legitimate purpose? So I, I don't, I don't really have any enforcement concerns. I think it's more of a, a vetting process to make our citizens feel more comfortable that people that are going door-to-door should have a permit of some sort, authorizing them, and, and letting citizens know that they have been vetted with the city, that they are permitted to do that.
Is this the roofing people, or what do you refer to?
The number one, the, the ones we've been dealing with lately are roofers and dent repair companies following the hailstorm. That's been the number one cause we've been getting lately.
Okay, so what about like, do we all set up?
This could apply to everybody, including even if, if you, if you read through, it even applies to any city notices or solicitation as well. If we were to go out and pass out any door-to-door flyers, anything along those lines, it applies to that as well.
Would they, would they? To go and get a permit?
It's, we are actually one of the few cities currently that don't require permits. It's pretty common, and we get questioned all the time by solicitors. They come up here and ask us for a permit, but we don't have a permitting process.
Right, but this will be for them to get a permit?
Yes, this would be for them to get a permit.
So if they're going out and they don't know that this is in place, are they still going to be vetted by the police when they go and check?
Yes, police would still respond, check, and then direct them to go and obtain a permit before they can get to you.
Got it. And can you hear over there?
Oh yeah.
Okay, so we do need to speak this loud? Okay, because they were, they were saying that they couldn't hear.
Yeah, we, I've got new speakers that are going to be set up next meeting. We didn't have time today, but we'll get those fixed.
So the people who are, who get vetted, are they going to have some kind of, if they have 10 people on your team, are they, is everybody going to have a copy of the permit or an ID card or something?
I haven't read through this. Is that, is that outlined in here? You'll have to hold it down for a second, turn on, sorry. There you go.
The business entity has to register, and every individual who's going to be a representative also has to register.
Okay, so when they finish soliciting houses in the area, do they turn their ID card back in? And how do we control that?
I don't think, we, we wouldn't take their ID card from them. They would just be registered with us.
Oh, okay, so they could come back again. They wouldn't have to go through the vetting process if we had another storm three months later?
Yeah, but the permit's good for a year.
So how long?
One year. She's saying one year.
One year?
Yes.
Okay, cool. And pretty much most cities have something along this line?
Yes.
Would they have something with them that shows that they have a permit?
That's what I was after. Some kind of ID.
The ordinance actually requires them to wear it where it's visible.
They have to wear their permit.
Okay, good, good. So if there's 12 people on their team, all 12 of them will have something. I like that.
So would we post signs in each individual neighborhood saying permit required for solicitation? Or?
Be careful with solicitation.
Or we just wait till we get the complaint, send PD out there?
I mean, you can, you can advertise on your website, you know, that, that we put this in place, you know, let people know that it's in place. But I, I don't, I don't know of another city that's put signs up that says, you know, now we have this provision. Another feature is, you know, it, it wouldn't be a bad idea to spotlight it on the city's website for a little while, because another feature is that a citizen can post a no solicitor sign, and then it's a violation, even if they have a permit, if they come up to that house to solicit.
Okay, cool. Okay, so will, everybody read this, and we'll discuss it for action next time?
Yes.
Cool.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, next item, item B is updated website for the City of Everman.
Adil, would you be able to share my, share my screen?
Sorry. All right, perfect. So we are getting very close to launching the new website. Mayor Pro Tim Mackey has been kind enough to come up and spend close to six, seven hours with us now on going through the website and making sure that it is user-friendly and, and providing her English teacher assistance on the webpage, making sure that everything is formatted appropriately. We've worked really hard on getting this organized in a user-friendly fashion. I was hoping it was actually going to be live today. We are, we're really close, so it'll be any day now that we'll be advertising it in live with the, with the new website. One of the key features to the new website is that the homepage is a no-scroll homepage, meaning that there's, there's nowhere to scroll. Everything is immediately located right here on the homepage for ease of access, including all of the buttons down here below, such as news, calendar of events, report a problem, pay online, notifications, civic center, and then ordinances. We made a couple of changes to this one based off input from Mayor Pro Tim Mackey. Up at the top, residents can come in and select the department they're most interested in if they're looking or seeking specific information. And then it's very easy to access information here from a menu on the left underneath each, each department. So for example, Public Works, if we have a resident who is seeking information on our TCEQ quality reports, all that information is contained here within the website in a very user-friendly, orderly fashion. So we've gone through with a fine-tooth comb, trying to organize everything and make sure that it's very easy to use. When this website gets launched, Civic Plus, which is the, the company that we're using to develop this website, has assured us that the old websites will be no more. They, you won't be able to find them or get links to them through Google. I know that that's been a big complaint for a while. Any questions or concerns regarding the website? I just wanted to share it with you. Hear any input that you might have?
It looks really nice. You've put everything that consists of the city of Everman. That's really nice.
Thank you.
Yes. You gotta have the bird. You gotta have the bird.
The bird is good.
All good? Okay. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Next item, consideration of possible action. Item A, Resolution Number 2025-06-01, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Everman, Texas approving the expenditure of funds in the amount of $27,000 from street improvement tax funds for professional services to be provided by Teague, Mill, and Perkins, Inc. for the Ray Street Culvert Bridge Analysis and Design, authorizing the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents and providing an effective date. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-06-01 as read.
Second.
Most remittances seconded, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
What all is the $27,000 supposed to take?
So this is related to the bridge that is located right here next to Pittman Park on Ray Street. This bridge has been identified as, texted out as being substandard, and they are demanding and requiring the city to, to replace this, to, to look at replacing that bridge or fixing that bridge. We're not sure whether or not that's going to require a full replacement of that bridge, or if we can just simply make repairs to that bridge. And we've asked our city engineer to come out and review that. This $27,000 allocation is for them to come out and conduct the study on the status of the bridge and develop a plan for either repair or replacement of the bridge. This is not going to cover any construction costs associated with repair or replacing that bridge. This is just for them to evaluate the bridge and put together the plan to correct the issue.
How long is it supposed to take?
I don't know that that's included in their scope. Let me take a quick look. I don't, I don't believe so.
I didn't see it.
Because I see that some of the charges, that the costs would be compensated for would be like mileage, airfare, and lodging.
That's typical language within any professional service agreement. We don't anticipate any of that to be a factor here. If you look at the price breakdown, the basic service, they've allocated $5,000 for surveying. The, the big expense with this is the hydraulic modeling. That's always expensive to do because this bridge is there for the creek and located within a floodplain. They have to make sure that any and, and all changes to that bridge do not negatively impact the floodway. So that's, that's the big expense at $15,000. $6,000 obviously for a summary memo and exhibits, that's, that's really where their professional services come in. And then $1,000 for the floodplain development permit, which is required by TCEQ to come in and do the, the hydraulic modeling and surveying that they're looking to do.
Okay, so they're going to move part of the kids playground up, or how, where are they going to move that to?
Not sure just yet. Once, once, once we got your approval to move forward. And, and let me highlight the reason why this is on here in kind of an urgent fashion. Text dot is putting a lot of pressure on the city to, to resolve this and get a plan going right away. They have significant concerns about the condition of that bridge over the next five years, and they want us to, to get a move on. So they're putting a pretty heavy pressure on us to, to work on this bridge now. We have the option. We don't have to select to go with this. Our recommended, the staff recommendation is to select TMP to go with this. If you wanted to put it out for bid or RFP, we could, we might be able to save some costs, but we're not sure that's going to save a lot, and if, if any at all. And it's probably going to prolong the work that, that we're under the gun for getting this bridge repaired anyway.
It's just a study.
Yes, it is. It is just a study. I don't know the answer as to where they would temporarily move park equipment or what kind of impact that's going to have. But they would, as, if this was approved tonight, they would put together a full scope of work with a plan and a proposal that would have to be reviewed by staff before, before.
I just wondered if you had an idea where you, you know?
I, I don't just yet. I don't know how impactful that's going to be.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Would you poll the council?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item, item B, Resolution Number 2025-06-02, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Everman, Texas approving an interlocal agreement with Tarrant County for the reconstruction of Wichita Street from Bell Street to Enon Avenue, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve Resolution Number 2025-06-02 as read.
Aye. Oh, second. Sorry.
Most remittances seconded, we'll open it up for discussion.
This was brought to us actually from the county. The county is interested in coming in and assisting us with Wichita Street. If you recall, Wichita Street from Enon Avenue to Bell Street was completely reconstructed about 10 years ago. It's already at complete failure. One of the reasons why they believe it is at complete failure is because it requires a higher-rated PSI asphalt to go in. So they want to come in and do that for us. The only expense the City of Everman would incur on this project would be the milling of the current roadway, which we already have contract services for. Come in, it'd probably be somewhere in the range of $40,000 to $50,000 from street improvement tax for them to come in and remove the existing roadway. County is, is Commissioner Miles is using his dollars to pay for the reconstruction of that road. So it'd be a complete reconstruction. The only thing we're on the hook for is about 50 grand or so for the, for the milling of it. So it's our recommendation to go ahead and get this approved and move forward. This will give us a nice, new roadway for when the northern part of Wichita is completely done, hopefully all the way through our city.
So it's from Bell down that way?
No, it's from Bell south. Bell to Enon.
Oh, this one back this way?
Yes, all the way this way.
Thank you.
And are they going to widen it, or what are they going to do?
No, there's no, no plans to widen, just a complete reconstruction of asphalt there.
It would be pretty.
Yeah, if we had to widen it, there's a bridge there, we would have to, then the price would go up substantially at that point, so.
We're going to redo the bridge anyway.
I believe that, no, that's, that's Ray Street, other side.
Oh, shoot.
If, if approved tonight by council, we'll get this back to the county tomorrow. I believe it's going to, they're planning to put this on their next county commissioner's agenda, and they want to move forward with it as soon as possible. They're ready to, to begin on the project.
Any further questions or comments? Just poll the council.
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item, item nine, executive session. Item A, Section 551.071, pending or contemplating litigation or to seek advice of the city attorney related to case number 067-364940-25, Earlene Wilson versus Rollamania LLC, the City of Everman Fire Department at, at all. Time is 6:22, and we are in executive session. Time is 6:22, and we are in executive session.